They give different topics for what they will be doing for the state level performance task, not for the end of course assessment, that will be more similar. Another piece of the middle school curriculum that we're excited about is the investigating curriculum that the investigating history curriculum that the state put together. It is inquiry-based instruction, both at the lesson and unit level. And the state put together some really, really high-quality resources. I was impressed that they put something together that really did look classroom-ready. And our sixth and seventh grade teachers have spent some time during curriculum meetings, PLCs, time on their own planning, sort of digging through the resources. We're currently using it as a supplement to what we already do, finding places that can extend our curriculum a little bit farther than what we have been doing, or areas maybe where we haven't been as strong, finding more resources to use. So the sixth and seventh grade teachers have been working on that. There are also fifth grade resources, and there are talks of expanding it backwards and putting together some resources for elementary school in the future. But that's all sort of to be determined. See that one, see that. At the high school, I know I talked a little bit last year about the quarterly assessments. One of our main focuses through the three-year core course curriculum is building students' research and writing skills so they can successfully complete a junior year research paper. And we discussed what types of skills we want them to build, what kind of research skills, what kind of writing skills. And we've sort of gone into our second year with those. And we've done a little bit of practice with blind grading of student work. So far on the factual research assignments, but sort of moving into the DBQs. And it's really been sort of eye-opening to have two different teachers grade a paper. You don't know which teacher that comes from. And while we are, you know, very much aligned, sort of our first time through, it's led to some really interesting conversations as to why one teacher may have given it a meets standard, why another teacher may have given it an exceeds standard. We're really in the sort of beginning phases of this process, but it's helpful to have three different teachers on staff who have done the AP grading. And so they're familiar with that process. They're able to sort of help talk about, sort of facilitate some of those conversations. And again, it's really all building towards our junior year. We want to be able to say, here you go. You pick a topic, find something that you're interested in that we've been studying, do the research, you know, we give them steps to go through, but we really want them to create the majority of that on their own. And a little bit about the civic engagement projects at the high school. This list of topics includes both some of the presentations that groups did last year and then some of the topics that groups have identified this year in 10th grade. Topics like teenage mental health, roads and lighting in Walpole, recycling and littering, bullying, homework policies, school culture, promoting diversity in school, food insecurity, public transportation, and a lot of other, you know, topics that are important to the students in the class. It's really important that this is a student-driven topic, student-driven assignment. And I gave a couple of examples of presentation slides from students last year, talking about how much they valued their experience going through the civic engagement project. And then one where students were polled about how much homework they do each night for one of the groups that presented on homework policies. I always like to bring how our AP classes have been doing. We were very successful again. Last year we had U.S. History and Psychology. Forty-two percent of our students received fives on the exams in those classes. And then eighteen and thirty-five percent received, sorry, threes and fours, sort of what we call, you know, passing the AP exam, potentially getting college credit for that. And next year, we will be including AP United States Government and Politics in the curriculum for the first time. I know when I was here last year that I told you we have a teacher who's gonna take the Summer Institute. She completed that. Her and I are currently in the middle of the teacher portion of the textbook evaluation. We're gonna try and narrow down the wide range of AP textbooks that exist to get maybe two or three, and then to pull in some seniors and actually ask them to answer some AP government-type questions, even though they won't be in the class, and then give them a couple of different textbooks to use and get their feedback on which they found to be the most helpful. And then use sort of our evaluation and their evaluation to make a choice and select the textbook for next year.
Great. Thanks to you both. You've been busy. There's a lot going on.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the committee for Mr. Donahue and Ms. Hallworth?
I'll just add if it's okay, because since this presentation was prepared, we are also seeking a grant to do more with investigating history. It's a new curriculum provided by the state, as Mr. Donahue explained. But we're excited as it'll continue to expand to fourth grade, potentially third. And now the state is providing some potential grant funds to help support districts like ours who have started the process but looking for more professional development to continue to implement this curriculum. So it's kind of in the early stages, but something that we're looking to support has gotten a really positive response from our teachers. As you'd say, that's fair to say, correct?
Thanks.
I was gonna say, I really like the way that you guys are doing presentations and debates. I know my daughter had a debate this past week, and it's just a great way to bring the curriculum to life. You know, just reading something is one thing, but when you actually have to get up there and debate with someone, it just, you know, brings it to life. And I thought that was really exciting.
Yeah, we want kids to do history. We don't wanna do history to kids. We want them, we want them to do it.
Mrs. Gallivan?
Yeah, I would just say, I love the idea of having them debate because they also have to look at the opinion that they don't agree with, or, you know, sometimes debate from the side that they don't agree with. But it makes them be a little bit more comprehensive in terms of the way they look at things. And then during the fall, when Dr. Goff and I went to the conference, we saw the, one of the presentations was about that investigating history. And I just think it's great that you're sort of willing to jump in on something that really looked pretty interesting. Again, just sort of a different way of engaging kids in the content that they're gonna be learning in sixth and seventh grade. So, good job.
Yes, Ms. Hall?
Madam Chair, great work. I love the ninety-five percent cred, possible credit rate on the AP exam. I love the, we've as a board and as a body over the last few years have really been continuing to push for an expansion in AP offerings. And I think you received that message. We're glad to have you back here, kind of showing delivery on that. I think I might have said this last year, I really liked that junior year research paper. I think for those who, unlike myself, may not love history or may have history done to them throughout their time in the public schools, the capacity to, as we talked about, not only verbally kind of go back and forth with sources, but to be able to gather sources, create a research paper, talk about evaluation of texts and things like that. I think that that's a really widely applicable skill set that you're starting folks off at, at an early age. And I know we've heard from a lot of recent graduates who come back and we see some get involved in civics who tell us that this sort of foundational level really helps them, especially if they go into more liberal arts or more writing-centric fields for further education. So I like that a great deal. I did wanna ask, because I've been asking every presenter about sort of apps and technology and the things that they're doing. I noticed in the middle school presentation, we talked about Newzella. Is that, I don't know what that is. I probably should know what that is. But is that just, is that just another kind of tool we use to, it was on maybe the first or second slide?
Yeah.
Just explain a little more for me.
Newzella is a platform that is basically current events. It's mostly nonfiction, but it does have fiction as well and some poetry. But it's updated every day, so you can log in. And our teachers log in through Google. It's free. You can have a subscription and get advanced services, but the free version is totally fine. So we also use that in ELA for the reading skills check. They do not advertise that that is a diagnostic, like you're eye-ready and so forth, which we are investigating maybe to have something like that next year at the middle school level. But we did use that platform, Newzella, and were able to get some sort of baseline for students for their reading level. So the nice thing about Newzella is that, as I said, they're mostly nonfiction, so it's very applicable to social studies, and there's a lot on there. You can just key in China and you get a slew of information. And in that dashboard, teachers can level lock or change the Lexile level of the passage. And there's five passages, and it's also written in Spanish. So you, if you know the reading data for your students, which we do share between ELA and social studies teachers, they can have one group of students reading a ten-fifty Lexile, which would be above grade level, and then they can change the Lexile level and have them read it there at a lower level. So it's a really great tool that we have.
I really appreciate that. And I think your role in particular, especially at this middle school level, and the overlapping of these kind of humanities and really, I think I've seen over the last six or seven years, really needing in those writing opportunities and reading opportunities within these kind of two areas is something great we're seeing. And I, to kind of echo, I really love the tools we're giving students to do things, which I think in our society is so important, to evaluate sources. And Horace Mann said, the whole purpose and the product of public education is to create a responsible citizenry. So I think that's kind of one of the core things that we've been supposedly doing for two hundred years. And I think these sort of research tools will really give our students, as they go through the system, a nice set of toolkit, as they go to sort of lay their careers as well. So all great stuff, and hopefully you'll come in with a fourth AP maybe in a year or two as well. Keep thinking.
We will have four next year because we'll be running AP Euro again.
Oh, excellent. I didn't see on the slide.
It didn't run last year. It's running again this year. With a pretty healthy class size, too. They've got twenty-four, twenty-five in there this year.
I know Psych really helped us with our AP numbers as well, because it is so popular. And for better or for worse, the AP usage is a metric that some of the wider U.S. News and World Report and the like use to evaluate school districts. So I think your department in particular is one that's kind of driving and helping us. Not that the rankings are the sole important piece that we look at, but I think that they're helping the cause in a great ways. The more of those things you can offer and the more kids we can get involved and the larger numbers you can, and I like how, I think Psych in a specific way is one of those courses where we don't necessarily, like you don't have to be straight A, knocking it out of the park. I think it's one of those courses where we're really encouraging students to strive. And hey, this might be a little tough, but why don't you take a stab at it? So I think that's all great stuff as well.
Yeah, we have more students. We have four classes of AP Psychology for the first time this year. We've gone back and forth between one and three over the last few years. Since we introduced it, we have four this year.
Before you go, there's a message I wanna pass on to the two of you. We had the good fortune of hosting Walpole's Legislative Delegation at the high school this morning, and several of the high school students were present. Senator Mike Rush issued an open invitation to host our students at the State House. And so I am passing that on. I'm putting that on television. So it's on the record, and I invite you to send him a little email and hold him to that, because that could be a really great experience for the kids.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just one quick comment.
Yeah?
Mike, I love the idea with the student evaluation with the textbook, because, you know, as we're trying to find different ways to increase student voice, that's another way to do it. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
And just a real quick comment through the special ed lens and accessibility. That's one of the things I really like about Newzella and things like that, that we can bring that into the special ed side as well and really be able to make it accessible to a different range of students. So I think the more we can do that and have it be in even sub-separate setting that they're accessing some part of that curriculum is great.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
We are moving on to our second item under new business, which is extraordinarily exciting. It's the approval of the Educational Cooperative and Bi-County Collaborative Lease Agreements.
Yes, so both the Tech and our BiCo collaboratives have been in negotiation with the town of Walpole to lease space at the soon-to-be vacant Johnson Middle School location. So you do have lease agreements in your packet. So the space will be a shared space where Tech will have the bottom floor and BiCo the first two floors. And I believe Tech signed, voted, the board voted last Friday.
Next Friday.
Last Friday. And BiCo board just voted today. And that was unanimous vote, so one abstention. But they voted, it was unanimous. So it's really exciting, and they're looking forward to getting in and leasing the building. And from what I've heard from the BiCo, Bi-County Collaborative Board, is that they're just really excited to have their children in a school and be close to the school community, and just have so many opportunities afforded to them. So they're thrilled.
And these agreements represent a tremendous amount of work on the parts of Mike Frischa, Dr. Goff as superintendent, also as our representative to BiCo, Nancy Gallivan as a representative to Tech, and our friends on the town side. So we are truly grateful for all of the effort that went into making this happen, because the revenue, a portion of the revenue will support the school department for at least the next ten years and potentially longer. So that's really something.
Any questions or comments from the committee? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve both the, what do you want? Do you want them one at a time?
Yeah, whichever you prefer.
I make a motion to approve both the Tech and BiCo collaboratives' lease of Johnson Middle School. Request to lease space of Johnson Middle School as, let me start again. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve both the Tech and BiCo collaboratives'. Is it an offered lease? Is that what we're calling it?
Lease agreement?
Lease agreement for the, for classroom space at Johnson Middle School in the, as included in your packet and negotiated by Superintendent Goff and Senator. Mr. Frischa, the town.
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Rogers. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Congratulations. Job well done. And next up is Dr. Goff's superintendent report.
Yes, so I'll read Victoria's report first. She wanted to let us know with the high school semester coming to a close that many of the classes are taking unit and term assessments. Report cards were sent out last Tuesday. And additionally, many students, specifically seniors in the foreign language classes, they're currently taking the bilingual literacy test to demonstrate their skills, bilingual skills in Spanish, French, or Latin. She also indicated that the student, in terms of winter sports season, the student section turnout has been strong, especially in some of the highly anticipated games of the season. The track and field teams are finishing up their regular season and have had great results. And other winter teams continue to build on their success. Girls' basketball and girls' hockey, she noted, is having some good seasons. And last week, winter sports teams hosted an ALS Awareness Week to support "For You, I Will Fight." And finally, clubs continue to be busy and plan activities. The speech and debate team completed last weekend, competed, sorry, last weekend. And the UNICEF club continues their clothing drive. The French, Spanish, and PM club are also in the works of planning a joint field drive. And many clubs are also doing Valentine's Day themed raffles and tents.
And I will go in tonight?
Yep. I just wanted to, as we celebrate National School Counselor Week, if you didn't know that, that was this week. It is. Dr. Han and I want to take a moment to express our gratitude to the incredible work that the counselors do each day to support our students and contribute to the success of our school community. Last Wednesday, we had a successful Title I night. I wanna thank Bill Han and the Title I staff for their work in organizing this family evening. Believe it or not, February fifth was the official one-hundredth day of school. I cannot believe it. Tomorrow, Term One elementary report cards are viewable in the Aspen Family portal. The elementary and the middle school Term Two report cards are now posted. And as Victoria mentioned, Term Two report cards were issued on January. When I do my superintendent's report, I'll put a link in case parents don't know how to access that. Last Friday, I attended a mock trial at Rentham District Court. And what that does is it places our high school students in the simulated courtroom trial experience in the roles of lawyers and witnesses in a hypothetical case that lasts about three hours. I mentioned this to our legislators this morning. I was completely blown away. So impressed with our students. They competed against Nobles. They won their case. They were the prosecution. They won that. They, the score was ninety-seven to ninety-five. They lost by two points. But the judge said that he hasn't seen two better teams like this in a long time. He said the average is typically, his average is typically an eighty-four. So he was quite impressed. So they have three trials. That was their last one. But once we can get the dates for next year, I'll share them, because it is really worth seeing, really proud of them. And I also want to recognize Phil Balkis, Balkis, social studies teacher, who's the advisor for this team. I know a ton of time and effort goes into that. We held a planning for success for our leadership group, leadership team today. We participated in a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in terms of planning, strategic planning and implementation. And principals have begun soliciting feedback to the visioning session that we did for those of you that were at strategic planning. What was it, the year, twenty-twenty-nine? It was the date of twenty-twenty-nine, and, you know, what do we have versus twenty-twenty-four? So principals are doing this activity at their staff meetings. They're also doing them at the school councils, at their PAC meetings, and then at also some of the student, they're working on student councils, even including elementary schools as well, so forgetting that. I also provided you with a handout of where we are currently with the kindergarten preregistration. So you'll see that we still have some that are on the census and haven't registered. So secretaries will be calling, contacting those families, so we can get an update. And you can see that some of the unknowns were those that were not on the census that registered as well. Some other upcoming events tonight, Walpole High School Counseling Department. They're holding a college admissions panel right now that features admissions from reps from Bridgewater State University, Tufts University, and Stonehill. So students and families will have the opportunity to learn about the admission process and ask questions. Tomorrow's an early release for everybody. Next, the sixteenth and the seventeenth, Walpole High School Winter Play, Radiant Girls. That's what they are presenting. And then I just got a note that said that they are also bringing the play to the Massachusetts Educational Theaters Guild's Annual High School Drama Festival on March second, and it will be Walpole High School's first time competing in this festival. So that's great. And finally, we have February break, nineteenth to the twenty-third. So mark your calendars for that. And that is it. I'll let you guys talk about legislative breakfast, and then you can add, you know, the meaning about the athletic budget.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments about that? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to old business, starting with a budget update.
Yes. Mike Frischa and I presented our budget for FY twenty-five, the school budget, to Finance Committee on Monday night. And we had the opportunity not only to present our budget, but to also talk about the strengths of our district, you know, how we were able to, what we're able to do to really drive our district forward from anything from our STEM elementary to our work-study program, to our career and innovation pathways, so, and our changing demographics and our special education population as well. And we also discussed the gap of five-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars and the major budget drivers, these external budget drivers that include our personnel, the unprecedented special education impact, because that was a forty-two percent, that's a forty-two percent increase. As we mentioned, the yellow bus transportation and electricity. So again, and Carrie, to your point, these are external factors that we can't control. There's no, there was, no one voted. Jim Johnson Town Administrator made the recommendation to hold off on that to see what additional revenue may come from either the town or the state. So we're gonna hold off on that. But I do appreciate being able to present to FinCom and, you know, continue our collaborative work with them. It was a good discussion.
If anybody else had any comments? Myself, Mrs. Gallivan, and Mr. Buckley were there as well. I concur. It was a great discussion and excellent presentation. Any comments to add? Questions? We'll move on. To the middle school building project, Mr. Breen is not here. If I were to play the role of Mr. Breen, I would say, still on time, still on budget. But if anybody wants to add more to that, please do.
We're still going with middle school, you know, all our transition meetings. Actually, this month, they're gonna start joint, school council meetings will be joined. So from the end of February will be Walpole Middle School.
School council meeting, the parent, the parents.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
School council.
All right. High school renovation project. We are also missing Mrs. Syrek tonight. I'm not gonna try to do an impression of Mrs. Syrek.
No, no news. Status quo.
Status quo on that. I think there are some working group meetings coming up.
Correct.
Right. Nothing new to report. All right, and so we will move on to subcommittee activity. I believe that the two things we have to report on are this morning's legislative breakfast, as well as the athletics budget subgroup, which met this week as well. So I don't know, Mrs. Gallivan, would you like to start with this morning or athletics?
Sure.
This morning?
I'll start with this morning.
Yeah, I'll go with athletics.
Perfect. Okay. So again, it was really, really nice to see how many people from Walpole were interested in showing up to meet with our legislators. We had a shortened, slightly shortened version of what we planned to do, but all five of our state reps, so Senator Rush and our four state representatives, were all there. I think we're in a really fortunate situation that they really listen carefully to what we have to say. They're at the beginning of their budget process. So the governor has just put out her version of the budget. In April, the House will put out its version. In May, the Senate will put out their version. And then the three of them have to come to an agreement in the end. Essentially, it's the House and the Senate who work together to get a consensus. And unless something goes, well, the governor always has the chance to veto if she chooses to. But it's, the rest of the work that still has to happen will be done at the House and the Senate level. And the news this morning was not positive. It was very sobering, but it's also, I think, helpful to know what we're dealing with. And I really admire our representatives for being straightforward and not just giving us the story that they think we wanna hear. I think that they were also attentive to the fact that there are things that we're asking of them that are within the realm of possibility. I know that we talked about how there was some surprises in terms of funding that we expected to get from the state, and they were as surprised as we were. So I think that that gives them one task that maybe they can remedy for us in a fairly efficient way at least. That's my hope after, you know, on the optimistic side. The reality is that, you know, we know the state's revenue is not coming in the way it was predicted. So they have some tough choices, too. But I guess the bottom line is that just as we have to prioritize, we were asking them to prioritize, too. And in a state like Massachusetts... And in a state like Massachusetts especially, the health of, the economic health of our state relies on a strong K to 12 educational system. And I think we made that point. So, you know, but it was awesome to see so many people there and it was enjoyable.
Yeah, I agree.
Thanks for coming in here.
And I would just add, much appreciation to you for connecting all of the players and pulling it all together on a relatively short time.
Yeah, very short. Well, they were very responsive, at which I was pleased with because that's not always the case. Our people are good, but, you know, it is, it's hard sometimes to get everybody together. And they were great.
Yeah, I think it was very worthwhile.
I think the Tech legislative breakfast is that, or the Tri-County legislative breakfast? Tri-County and Tech. Collaboratives, March 8th? March 28th. They moved it back a bit. It's going to be in Norwood at the Senior Center, and the Tech Phoenix kids do catering there. So they're going to be the chefs for the hornet. Yeah. So I'll send that out to everybody. I don't know, I think it's an open invitation. I just have to find out, you know, whether, I don't know how much space they have, but what would be good about this, that one is that it's multiple towns, many, many towns coming together, which is a really important part of the whole process. So stay tuned.
Thanks. The other meeting this week was the subgroup to discuss and create or retail the athletics budget. Mr. Buckley, I don't know if you'd like to summarize that conversation for us?
Sure. Do you, Madam Chair? Obviously, we've been in budget season for a couple of months. Obviously, we have a $500,000 budget deficit. So we are, as a body, looking at a number of our revolving accounts, a number of the things we charge fees for as we normally do our due diligence to really understand the four corners of these matters, especially in athletics. It began with last meeting where we received a budget presentation from the athletic director about the FY25 outlook and some of the really moving factors within that budget. So we had a three-hour meeting on Tuesday, which was long, and we really got into the nuts and bolts of the athletic budget. And we asked, we had some great, really in-depth dialogue with the athletic director, talking about what the push-pull factors are. As we, as a body, do our due diligence before, probably in April, making a decision about whether or not to raise athletic fees. So we had asked, coming out of that meeting, the athletic director to reach out to the booster groups and coaches and invite one or two members from each to a meeting. I don't have the date on me currently, but I believe he's reaching out to them. It will be in March with a small group of us to really explain the moving parts of our budget. Our goals will be threefold. Number one, to really acknowledge how much the boosters already do, to acknowledge their fundraising and their contribution to the athletic budget, to really set the stage for them and be exceedingly transparent with all of the different stakeholders within athletics about what the actual budget costs. And also show them what of those, which of those costs are and are being increasingly subsumed by our operating budget, most notably within transportation, within facility rentals, and within the cost efficiency. So we're hoping to really set the table, talk about how much the boosters do already, explain to them the working parts of the budget, which they may not have an understanding of and really wouldn't otherwise, and then get their feedback on a number of proposals we have, possibilities to move forward. So we really just want to talk about the full picture of the budget and where we go from there. The great thing is it's such a wonderful program, it's such a successful program. It touches so many students. It's, for many students, the thing that gets them up and excited to go to school all day to play sports in the afternoon. And it's wildly successful. So we want to maintain that level of success by, while being really open with all the people who work hard to make sure we can keep these programs running about what it's going to cost to run these programs, especially not just now, not just in FY25, but in '26, '27, '28. So we really want to unpack that with people and have a dialogue. And this is something we did 12 years ago when we increased the fees. We did, we followed basically the same process and were very open with people about what the factors are in the budget. And so we're hoping for a really good conversation with them and then we will report back in probably our first meeting in April to this wider body, what we've heard from the boosters, what we found in our own research and close reading of the details of the athletic budget and probably, I believe, at that meeting about whether or not to raise fees and if so, how much.
Thank you. More information to come. Thank you. Seeing no citizens present, we'll move on to approval of warrants, donations, and minutes. Would somebody like to take the warrants? Mrs. Rogers?
I'd like to make a motion to approve following warrants, payroll warrant 2427 PS and 2429 PS for the amounts listed in your packet.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Rogers, second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants, 224030 and 224031 for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Rogers, second by Ms. Kozic. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. We also have our quarterly budget transfers. Mr. Buckley?
Do you, Madam Chair? Before that, I would make a motion to approve the Student Activity Fund and Food Service Accounts Payable Warrants as well. We have to delineate them, right?
I don't think we usually do.
And they're broken out on the thing, so.
I was told to break it up into payroll and then accounts payable.
Oh, cool. Why is it broken up here then? Anyway, I would approve the, make a motion to approve the budget transfer requests in the amount listed in your packet totaling, I don't have glasses on, $119,690.
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Galavan. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Gifts are next. Would anyone like to take the gifts?
Do you, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the two generous gifts we received from the Dedham Savings Holiday Card donation to the four elementary schools, the amount of $1,500, and basic textiles to Fisher School for $26.10.
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Rogers. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And finally, the approval of minutes.
Do you, Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the January 25th, 2024 School Committee Meeting Minutes?
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Galavan. All those in favor, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. We do have a need for executive session tonight for the purpose of union and non-union negotiation strategies. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session?
Do you, Madam Chair? I would make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of union and non-union negotiation strategies.
Second. Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by Mrs. Galavan. All of the committee, Mrs. Rogers? Yes. Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
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 Okay, 5-0-0. We will enter executive session and return to open session only for the purposes of adjournment. Thank you.